Good evening. We're just leaving an executive session. The board has convened in open session. I'd like to start out with resident concerns. If anyone has any concerns they'd like to raise that is not on the agenda, please step forward.
Tara was missed out, and I would like to know whether you'll let people speak during the library discussion.
We will be opening it up.
You will? Okay, thanks.
Hi, I'm Corinne Hogseth. I live in Indian Village, and I'm here tonight to register my disgust with your decision to remove Dave Longer from the 250 Committee on December 19th. Dave is a longtime and active member of the Acton community, and he's never been shy about his positions on various issues. This committee had decades to vet Dave before you voted him onto the committee and swore him in. But after he was sworn in, you received a letter sent by Sahana Purut voicing concerns that she'd only just recently become aware of, saying she didn't know him, she decided she needed to peruse his social media activity, specifically his Twitter account. Dave has 28 followers on Twitter. He's not really active. But still, somehow she felt compelled to mine his Twitter feed for incriminating posts, which she then collated and sent to you and others, who all chimed in with demands that Dave be removed. Why was Sahana allowed to vet Dave? Did any other committees go through this same vetting? Where are those background reports? Why weren't they shared with the public or discussed in public, the way Dave's background check was discussed? What were you afraid of if you'd been allowed onto the committee? Do you have so little faith in the other members of the committee that you thought he might derail their efforts? I don't think so. I think there's a lot of really good people on that committee. So I think that it comes down to you removed Dave, you were punishing him for his political beliefs. Every one of you, when you were seated on this board, you swore, I believe, two oaths, the U.S. Constitution and the Massachusetts Constitution. Those oaths bound you to uphold our constitutionally protected rights, including Dave Longer's First Amendment rights, which you may very well have violated when you tossed him off the 250 Committee. Our local boards are supposed to be nonpartisan, but they've become entirely agenda-driven, which has done nothing but divide our community. When our state senator and our state representative send in opinions on various issues using their official letterhead, they politicize issues and they politicize our local boards. The local woke mob has involved itself in other local issues and elections in recent years, always resulting in voices even slightly right of far left being silenced, which I believe is the desired outcome. The result is that people from all walks, all areas of town, whether teachers, students, parents, community members in general, are afraid to speak up. They certainly don't want to run to be on boards like this, that are controlled internally or externally by vicious ideologues, who will go to great lengths to smear good people for no reason other than that they dare to share independent thoughts. Or, as we've even seen in recent elections, because they're white. And I firmly believe this malicious silencing is deliberate. We know ahead of time which way nearly every vote on this board is going to go, because they're dictated, your votes are dictated by your agendas, not by what's best for the community. When there's a vote of any actual consequence to residents, the proposed battery storage facility on Discovery Way comes to mind. Rather than hold a vote, you pushed it off for another board to study, because your focus that night was on DEI issues and renaming Columbus Day. The comments you made during that Discovery Way discussion, as usual, reflected your own personal agendas while ignoring the concerns of the community members present. People are leaving Massachusetts in record numbers. By always looking for ways to divide the community rather than seeking common ground, you will ensure that Acton will not escape this trend. Thank you.
Any other resident concerns? I believe we got one in the audience, in the virtual audience. Matt, would you let Franny in, please?
Yes, Franny, you should be able to speak.
Hi, this is Brandy Osman, 16 Hackman Hill. I wanted to thank Town Manager for improving the visuals for people watching, so thank you very much. I am calling to just draw your attention to the letter I wrote to the planning board and the select board, or I CC'd this select board, hoping that we can look at Kelly's Corner and bring something to town meeting that's in the same spirit as the zoning warrant that we brought a few years ago and almost passed. It almost had a supermajority, and it didn't pass. But without it, I feel that we are moving ahead with all the improvements to Kelly's Corner, but without something at the end of the bridge. So I want to make sure that we're really proactively figuring out what's going to happen and that we have as much control as we can over the Kmart parcel and also just how the whole area is used. So I just wanted to bring your attention to that email, and I hope to talk to you about it more in the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Matt, do we have anyone else?
That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And noting the time, I'm going to adjust our schedule just a bit, because we do have a public hearing for a Class II Auto Dealer license, so we'll move ahead with that, and then we'll get back into the chair and Town Manager updates afterwards. So, under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 140, Section 58, the Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on January 9th, 2023, at 7:10 p.m. in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204, Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street, and by video conference and call-in for a Class II Auto Dealers License for Acton Lincoln Mercury Inc., located at 184 Great Road, Acton. Login instructions for computers can be found here. For a computer, please click on the link to join the public meeting, actonma.gov/meeting/bos, or from a telephone, dial 646-876-9923, and enter webinar ID number 503-918-785. Telephone users may dial *7 to request to speak after joining the meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request to speak. Mr. Manager?
I believe the applicant is here with us to present his business.
Are you looking for an explanation?
Just kind of walk us through it.
Okay, sure. I'm Coleman Hoyt. I am the president of Acton Lincoln Mercury, Inc., which is a bit of a confusing automotive entity on Great Road, because it's changed its names a couple of times and changed its brand a couple of times. I am the Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram dealer on Great Road as well. I have two adjacent parcels, 196 Great Road and 184 Great Road, and we operate them as one, but part of what we're doing at 184 Great Road is evolving and involves a different type of car business, and we just want to make sure that we're in compliance and thought that it would be appropriate, since we're conducting business there, even though it looks like it's one parcel, it's a different address. So we'd like to get mail there and make sure we're conforming to the Commonwealth's requirements and so forth. That's the reason we're here.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from members of the -- David?
Hi, welcome. Just two quick questions. How many cars do you intend to store on the site for sale?
To store?
Well, to, I mean, you're not keeping them forever, but how many cars will you have on the site for sale?
I think typically there are, it's a volatile number. It can be as high as 75 and as low as zero, depending upon things like microchips and the effect of the pandemic and the supply. It's very volatile. At the moment, if you drive by there, you'll see there are new cars up front, but there's a sort of a different activity in the back with black SUVs that we sell through a different channel nationally.
Okay. And I know you service cars at the Chrysler--
Correct.
--Ram Jeep dealer. Are you also going to be servicing cars on this property?
Yes, and we have been for a decade, and that's part of the reason we're trying to make sure we're aligned correctly. Yes, we have service bays in that facility as well.
Thank you.
Jim?
Just want to make sure I was reading the map correctly. 184 is the one that's right next to Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes, it's an odd configuration. It's actually a condo in a two-unit arrangement with the Dunkin' Donuts piece that's to the south.
Thank you.
Himichu?
Thank you. So just to ask for clarification, can you specify the differences between these two parcels again? And you said that 184 is evolving. Can you go into a little bit more specifics on how?
Yeah, sure. The larger facility, which is the Jeep business, which used to be Lincoln Mercury, and I've been there for 35 years, so this is a historic operation. That's primarily cars that you would consider buying. The other property adjoining it is where we conduct a different type of commercial car business, which is not applicable to an end user like you. You would have to have special licenses and a permit to hire to purchase those cars. So they're very different.
Any other questions from the board? Questions from the audience? Okay. I'll entertain a motion if somebody would care to make one. David?
I move to approve the Class II Auto Dealer License for Acton Lincoln Mercury at 184 Great Road.
Okay, moved and seconded. Need further discussion? Since we're all here, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, getting back on schedule. Town Manager update.
Thank you. Just a few items to cover. I wanted to announce that we were awarded competitive funding to participate in the New England Arts Foundation, New England Foundation for Arts. We're going to participate in a workshop series, which will help us with our Public Heart programs here in Acton, and it's very exciting. Economic Development Director, Planning Office in my office will be participating in the program, and we look forward to sharing more information about that later this year. I also wanted to mention, we've been getting a couple emails about the tax bills that were recent, you may have received in your mailbox or however you get mail. There's been an increase in many people's taxes, and of course, the cost of operating the town has increased, as it does every year. There are fixed costs that have increased. But the real reason for the increase in people's individual property taxes is the valuations. The average single-family home increased 16% last year, year-over-year, in what was valued. And so that's such a significant increase that actually, when the Select Board did its classification hearing on December 5th, it actually lowered the tax rate from 19.45 to 17.56 to comply with Prop 2.5 and to account for the fact that valuations have increased so much. So just a note to folks that may have been wondering why, it's primarily due to the increase in how much your property has gone up. It's not due to some new program or service that we're charging a lot more for. Other items I wanted to mention that in this room, we'll be talking more about the budget. January 17th, next Tuesday, we'll be having the Budget Workshop. I look forward to questions from the Select Board and the Finance Committee, and our staff is excited to make brief presentations that night. I'll be attending the Human Services Committee in this room on Thursday night. We're doing presentations of all of our Human Services staff to the relatively new committee, and it's been great dialogue, and we look forward to continuing that on Thursday. There's a big event coming up on February 4th. There's a movement across the Commonwealth where a lot of local newspapers have gone out of business or gone to digital-only, where communities are creating their own newspaper. And the League of Women Voters is hosting a forum here in this room on a Saturday, February 4th at 2:00 p.m. Will they be talking to, I think they may have someone that did it in another town, or they'll have people that know what it's all about, and there'll be a forum about starting a local newspaper and what that might take, what that might look like. So, February 4th. That's all, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Members? Is any -- Jim?
A couple things. So you just mentioned the League, which does a lot of really important work in town. A longtime member of the League, Marge Kennedy, passed away on December 28th. I'm not sure everybody knew that, but she's been a really important part of the town's civic life for many decades. Her service is going to be on January 28th at 10:00 a.m. at the Church of the Good Shepherd. I miss her. The other thing is, we're entering the beginnings of the town's election season. People can get nominating papers now for the boards and committees that are open. They have until early March to finish filling them out. So it's, I would encourage anybody to run who wants to run. I think the more candidates we have, the more, I think that's good for democracy. In that spirit, I'll say that I am running for reelection, and so there I'll be. Thanks.
Thank you. Himichu?
I have absolutely nothing of substance, except to say Happy New Year.
My only update is to announce that the first meeting of the 250th Anniversary Committee meeting will be on Thursday, January 26th, 7:00 p.m., Room 9 here in Town Hall. It was one of the Select Board's goals to establish the committee, and we did it. We're almost fully staffed in accordance with the charge from the Select Board, and we'll move ahead. Should be very exciting. Thank you. All right. Sarah?
Hi, I'm Corinne Stahl. I have a question about the tax bills. So the assessments go up and the rate goes down, so that the average increase should still be 2.5% plus new growth, but the new houses and the new growth should be paying for the new growth. So my bill went up 7.5%. Like, in every, I mean, I'm a spreadsheet junkie. 5.5% on average for the last 10 years. Two of those years had 11% increases. How can this, how can my house, my modest house friends, probably seen it, always be going up by at least twice the 2.5%?
Mr. Manager?
I'm happy to talk to you offline about your specific property, if that's slightly interesting. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. New and special business. Item four, approved recommendation regarding the role and responsibilities of the Citizens' Library Trustees. John, you going to lead off?
Thank you. So this is an item that we brought before you. It's following up on some conversations we've had over the last year. As you all know, the longtime director retired over the summer from the West Acton Library. We have a new director of the Memorial Library, who's taken on the role of overseeing now both operations and doing a wonderful job with that. And when we met in July, I presented to the board some options to staff the building for the summer and some recommendations for how we would move forward. It included increasing hours at the West Acton Citizens Library, increasing programs, increasing services, increasing access to information, and those are all things that we've accomplished over the last few months. The board appointed a third trustee in collaboration with the other trustees, because there was a vacancy, and that happened at the end of the summer as well. And so now the full trustees have been meeting and having a lot of input and meeting regularly, I would say, including tonight, about the Citizens Library. But there still remains a certain amount of ambiguity about what the actual role of the trustees is and how that relates to what we need to do as an organization to run a successful program, library services that benefit the entire community, including West Acton Village. So in the packet, I did provide a memo. It had a link to the July 11th presentation, which actually wasn't working until we fixed it today, so hopefully people figured that out. If not, I can share that out later, and hopefully you saw it on July 11th. But basically, council had reported that the only language referring to what the trustees do was in that 1962 town meeting article, and in that town meeting article, it basically said, "The town shall accept West Acton Citizen Library as a branch of the Acton Memorial Library." And then here we are, however many years later, and the trustees have been helping, supporting the library, doing several things. There were efforts that threatened the library services there, which the community got together and overcome, and so we have a very successful library now. But we still don't have bylaws that identify exactly what the West Acton Citizen Library trustees do. So in order to move forward in a way that we think is most effective, I'm asking the board to consider directing us to take one of two steps, or to take a step with one or two actions. We need to have clarification, and so what I'm asking the board to do is to direct us to work on either a draft local bylaw that specifically outlines the role of the trustees as it relates to the Citizens Library, or prepare a draft change to the Memorial Library's documents that identify how the branch of the West Acton Library fits into that and then how the trustees fit into that. So those are two different paths that are sort of with the same approach of clarifying the role of the trustees from West Acton into this municipal operation. I know that the trustees are here in meeting, that they may have further to add, but I just wanted to let you know what I'm looking for tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I understand we've got at least two, if not three, of the trustees available to participate, and I was checking to see if you folks have legally convened your meeting yet. Okay, then, just to make sure we don't have any open meeting law violations. You know, to sort of give some folks my understanding of what's going on and my commitment, I think that whatever comes out of this, I'm 100% committed to the continuation of a library presence, and for lack of a better term, we'll call it the West Acton Citizens Library in West Acton in its present building or something adjacent to it. And I think, you know, I've got some familiarity with the West Acton Citizens Library. I actually served as a trustee there for a couple of years. So it's important that there be no misunderstandings, that at least as far as me as a selectman for the next two years and me as chair of this board for the next four months, we're 100% committed to maintaining that library presence there. And I think the important thing is, and what I've been very pleased to see, is with the recent collaboration since July with AML, it seems like there's a great deal more opportunity for services there. I think, you know, some of this was started under Jen Friedman, when she pushed so hard to get the West Acton Citizens Library in the Minuteman Library Network. We're going to be faced with some serious financial situations over the next few years, and it's important that we make sure that folks in town who pay their tax bills get good value. And we need to make sure that we do whatever we can to enhance that library, to increase the readership, to increase the patronage there, so that we can justify having two libraries in this town. I think that's, it's not unprecedented for there being two libraries in one town, but I think it's really important. So just to let you know my personal commitment and what I'm hoping to see come out of this process. With that, I will open up first to comments from other members of the board. Himichu?
Thank you. So yes, I, for those who may not know, I serve as the liaison for both the Memorial Library and our Citizens Library. So just wanted to provide a little bit of detail based on the conversations that I've had with staff, with their trustees. So also looking back at the 1962 town meeting article, I took a look at it, and it does look that, it does look like we did vote to take on the Citizens Library as a branch. The wording was a little unclear in some places, but ultimately, that was what I had read it as. And so I think that it's pretty clear that based on this town meeting, and I couldn't find also any other reference, that we did incorporate that as a branch. But there have been some discrepancies. So one example is with our Minuteman system. We are, I think, the Citizens Library is in the Minuteman system as an independent library. And so all of that to say, and that wasn't much talking, but essentially, even though we have been and are legally a branch, in many ways, over the past couple of decades, we have been operating it independently, but it was for a multitude of reasons. And I think that now we have a unique opportunity to try to, in many ways, address these discrepancies and try to find common solutions and common paths. And so for me, I do see us moving forward as recognizing this as a branch, and so I'm glad we're having this discussion with our trustees today, recognizing the Citizens Library as a branch, but also thinking about how do we move forward with trying to codify how we manage our Citizens Library. And I will say, staff has been doing a fantastic job. Coming out of the pandemic has been really hard. We have had a lot of staffing changes, and every single day, staff do their absolute best to keep the libraries running, and our libraries wouldn't be best to keep the libraries running, and our libraries wouldn't be up without them. So I think that they've done a really fantastic job, and I think that having them involved in the drafting process is helpful. In terms of which one of these two directions we go to, I personally, I'll give my personal opinion in saying that I think that integrating both these boards has its benefits. So for example, one thing that we oftentimes talk about with the Citizens Library is the fact that it is a historic building, which means it doesn't have to be ADA compliant, but for a lot of library events that we want to host, it does have to be ADA compliant. And so oftentimes we'll have, if we have an event happening at Citizens, we're required to have that event at AML, or we're required to have a virtual component to that. And so that's just one example of how integrating these two libraries and streamlining these processes can greatly benefit the library services that we provide across the town. So I do, so I do see that as being my personal preference, but would also love to hear what the other board members think and also what our trustees think, because one concern that was brought to my content, was brought to my attention was the communication gaps. And I think that these communication gaps have happened for a multitude of reasons. I think we're all trying to gain our footing. We have had like different trustee changes, we've had staffing changes. But I think that making sure that, you know, we, we have people getting the information that they need is important. So one thing that we noted recently was that some of our trustees weren't on the list served, so, you know, staff was sending, as they do really well, information about meetings and events that we're hosting, but trustees weren't getting that information in real time, and we're sometimes having to hear it from secondary sources because there wasn't this, and this issue is being resolved. But it's just one of several things that I think have caused a lot of frustration among trustees, among staff, in terms of how do we collectively work together? And I think the goal is to collectively work together, and I think that us as a select board, having this discussion and finding, or at least providing some direction as to where we see the roles and responsibilities of these trustees potentially coalescing, I think, would be helpful. And so I'm glad we're having this discussion today. But yeah, I would love to hear from our trustees and also you all as well.
Thank you. Comments from other board members? David?
Thank you. So when I was first on the board, there were a number of complaints that came to me about inconsistent hours in the West Acton Library, or lack of, lack of certain services, like access to the Minuteman Library Network services, being able to order a book and pick it up there and things like that. Those services have improved a lot in the recent year or two, with the connection of the library to the Minuteman Network and staffing, you know, coming out of the Memorial Library. You know, and I'm not blaming anybody for the way it was before. There was one library director who did most, most of the work, and when she, so first of all, she had, she was a part-time person, and she had a limited number of hours to start with, and if she had something personal come up, you know, the library closed. And, you know, people complained to me that says, you know, I went to pick up my book, and the library was closed. It's supposed to be open, right? And so that, that was a problem. And now that it's been operated out of the Memorial Library, it's in, it's operating better. And so I think we need to have continued coordination there. It's clear to me that the Citizens Library trustees are not library trustees under Massachusetts General Law. They're, they manage the gift fund for the library. And I think it's important that we recognize that and clarify that, because right now there's divided, you know, divided reporting or divided managerial situation with two sets of trustees essentially doing, doing the same thing for, for this library branch. So I think we need to clarify that situation, and, you know, how we manage the gift fund, that is, you know, you know, for discussion, but I think it needs to be clear that, as was done as part of the agreement in 1962, that this be clarified as a branch library under the, as the Memorial Library. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
So yeah, I'm looking forward to hearing from the trustees too, but just a short comment. So in the, in the, in the 1962 town meeting, where, you know, where the, the branch library language was used, it was also clear that we were, you know, continuing to have West Acton Citizens Library trustees. So there was an important role to be played, and still is, by, by the trustees, I feel. There's an unfortunate phrase in, there's a sort of an ambiguity that led to an unfortunate misunderstanding in the, in the legal memo, which noted that, let me, let me bring the language up because I don't want to, I don't want to misquote town council. That's just a bad thing to do. The most reasonable approach is the wrackle trustees having control over, in parentheses, only, the WACL fund. And so that could mean that they don't have control over any other funds, which seems entirely reasonable, or it could be that that's the only thing they have control over is the funds. And for me, that's not taking advantage of the strength that the trustees can bring to the operation, which is that, in a sense, they are carrying the, the neighborhood experience of using the library and what it's like, what works well there. I think they have a really important role in reviewing programs and reviewing ideas that can go on in that library, you know, reviewing other kinds of changes to the library. So in the process of creating something written, no matter how we do it, whether it's a separate set of bylaws or a modification of the AML bylaws, I really want to see, you know, a real, a real robust description of the additional responsibilities of the trustees, which I guess, I think it's really all I have to say. I guess my, my question for the trustees would be, where are you at in your process of discussing bylaws? Because I did hear that you had started discussing this topic, and I'd love to know where you were on that topic. I suspect that this is a conversation that's going to take more than one meeting, so I'm fine with having a tentative decision tonight, but I think we need to continue the conversation.
Fran?
I'm so quiet tonight, under the weather, but I was, I have a quick question, and I don't know who to ask, but what does the West Acton Citizens Library, what is the fund, is it just a fund for that library? For just any?
Yeah, so to my understanding, the gift fund is specifically for uses for the West Acton Citizens Library. And so our trustees have been, whenever there's like anything that we need to fund using money from that gift fund, the trustees need to vote on that. But I don't know if anyone else has any other things to add?
Something that might remain, like it would remain even if, if, if boards were merged or whatever?
Yep. That's a really good question. I know there's, there's a Friends group that's also involved. I would have to, I think that would be probably a good question for town council, because that would also, speaking of the 1962 town meeting, it was clear that that would be one of the core responsibilities of a trustee. So if we do have a library, or if we still have the Citizens Library running, how would that gift fund be managed? What I would suspect is probably if we did have a joint AML WACL board, then it would be a joint decision, but I don't know, that's something hopefully town council can help with.
The, the bit that I understand about that fund was, you know, it's a lot of gift monies that have been presented specifically, there was a fairly large endowment made some years ago to it, but it was specifically to the West Acton Library.
Yeah, town council's here to, looks like to weigh in on that specific question, but I also forgot that I was supposed to introduce Maria to provide a comment when I was speaking. So I asked you to consider that at some point here.
Okay, we'll go for the legal clarification first.
I will make it quick. So the guests, the WACL trustees are responsible for managing the trust, and, and I think that the way that would be arranged, if the boards were, the board of trustees were consolidated or merged to a certain extent, you could still have a functioning WACL committee or subcommittee of that board that would control that trust fund. There are various ways to approach that, but that, that legal point you're making with respect to who controls those funds, that is one of the only pieces that is clear in the creation of the West Acton Citizens Library.
Thank you. Him and Jim.
Sorry, yes. So just to add to that, I think that, that is a good idea. And the other thing that we talked about too was, right now with the citizens trustees, there is ambiguity on the roles and responsibilities, and the one key thing we know is that they are in charge of the gift fund. And so one thing we were, one thing that I think would also help with this decision if we did decide to merge these two boards, was that it would give trustees potentially more roles and responsibilities, similar to the roles and responsibilities that AML has. So we would be using a same, a similar framework essentially that we have, but it also makes it easier for staff instead of having to report to two boards, which takes up a lot of time, to then just report to one board. So it essentially would streamline our processes while at the same time, hopefully, providing a little bit more flexibility and power for decision-making for our citizens trustees. So that's another thing I'll add, but would love to hear from our trustees as well.
Thank you. Any other comments at this point from members of the select board? Then, yes, we have not heard from the Memorial Library Director, Maria, if you'd care to make a few comments?
I just wanted to give you a little progress report on how we're doing. So Maria Palacio, Director of the Town of Acton Libraries, and that's Acton Memorial Library and the West Acton Citizens Library. And I just wanted to give you all a quick, for you at the select board, the trustees and everybody here that's present, just a quick progress report on how we're doing since we became a two-branch system here in the Town of Acton. So things have gone, the transition has gone really smoothly from an operational standpoint. We actively seek to maximize our resources and collaboration between both libraries in order to provide greater benefit to all Acton residents. One thing I wanted to clarify is that the Citizens Library is not set up as a separate library in the Minuteman Library Network. It is, it operates along with AML, and we actually get one invoice for both libraries for membership, and we just pay the bill. So we've been able to add value since July, when Jennifer retired, to the services at Citizens in the following ways. So to David's point about consistent hours, we've been able to stay open consistently for 24 hours a week as scheduled. I think due to illness, we had to close one time and another time when the library manager had an accident at the library, we did have to, actually, we didn't close somebody from over here at AML ran over there. So we are open 24 hours a week consistently. We hired a library manager, that's Kristen MacLeod. I believe she's listening from home. We increased the visibility of the Citizens Library through an expanded social media footprint. So any social media that comes out, any announcements of programs or services, that we just put, push them out along all channels, along with the Memorial Libraries. We've held several programs since July, and we're planning several more. Some programs we already had are the Halloween Storytime, the Henna Program, which is super successful, children's storytime that we had in the summer. We participated in the Holiday Stroll in December, and we're including the Lunar New Year Celebration in collaboration with other town departments coming this month of January. We're also planning a mystery book coffee hour starting this winter. We plan to start a Chinese language collection. We have added the museum passes to our central reservation system, making them more accessible to West Acton residents. We have trained 10 different AML employees to work at Citizens to help cover gaps, with the addition of two more just this week. So that's 12 people from AML that are trained to work at, at Citizens. We've received an indefinite loan of meeting room tables from municipal properties until we're allowed to use gift funds to purchase new programming furniture. We continually ask, we are, for this request, and we're hoping that will get granted, hopefully this month, maybe, we'll see. We worked with DPW to determine occupancy limits for the library, especially for the program room, because we want to make sure that we don't put too many people in there and that we safely are able to have a program. We continue to order new materials for Citizens and process them at Memorial and get them over to Citizens. We order supplies for Citizens centrally as well, so they never run out of things. We're seeing an uptick in the number of visitors and circulation of materials at Citizens. I did bring those statistics. We purchased a new people counter to help us generate better stats for state aid reporting, which is so important, and to help us look at hours and that kind of thing. We've been weeding items that aren't circulating or that are in really bad shape at Citizens. We're working with IT and with municipal properties to improve safety and security for staff and patrons. We did install a panic button that we have at AML. All of the doors were rekeyed, and we're looking at other safety options as well. Municipal properties applied to a CPC grant for ADA accessibility for citizens, and we've worked, we are working with MP to replace, we did work actually with MP to replace the faulty furnace, just probably around Thanksgiving, and the heating system at a cost of about $16,000. So those are some of the things that are happening from an operational standpoint, really smoothly. Patrons are really happy, staff are happy. Kristen brings a lot of energy to that library and lots of ideas, and we want to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member of the board have any questions for library director? Okay. Thank you. Let's open it to comments from the West Acton Citizens Library trustees.
Hi, my name is Tara Lucci. It's nice to see all of your faces again. I actually don't want to go first. I want to let my other trust, two trustee members go, and we do have Dodd on the line, and I'm hoping that you can promote her to be able to speak.
Is she a 508?
Hold on one second, let me check. Now you're going to test my, my abilities? She is 508-596-7360. Dodd, can you, you should be online now.
Okay. I am unmuted, according to my phone. Am I?
We can hear you.
Hi, every, hi, everybody. This is Dodd, Dodd Gertis, one of the trustees of our beloved West Acton Citizens Library, and I happen to be in Vegas, Puerto Rico, and it's a beautiful place, but I want my participating tonight to be an example of how dedicated and I am to the Citizens Library. And my concern is that as trustees, we have not been given a chance to participate in a single decision, except the museum passes, which I myself voted to have increased availability. But we want to participate. We want to be, you know, collaborate with Kristen, who is amazing and has with Kristen, who is amazing and has energy, but we have ideas and energy too, and being assigned to just manage the fund is almost insulting to me, because we paid money towards the open house during the Acton Stroll, but we didn't even know that was the scheduled event, but we were more than willing to give that, but to continue to just be asked to purchase merchandise out of the fund and have no participation whatsoever is very concerning to me. I don't understand why we cannot, I really appreciate Jim's comments about the trustees and how much we can contribute and have contributed, and, and I just, I don't know where else to go from, from there, except to put that in the bylaws, which we have been working on developing, and it's not something you can just obviously whip up, but I really, really want that to be considered, that the trustees want to be involved much more than controlling some gift funds, and we're interested in programming and, and how that can happen, how we collaborate with Kristen and Maria, and then I understand it goes to the programming, planning committee, but we should be part of that process before, before it gets to the programming. So, I think that's mostly what I really want to speak to, and I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, I'm Annette Lockery, thanks for the chance to say hello. I think over the past several months, things have gone really well, we very much appreciated the support and involvement of the folks at Memorial, in terms of leadership, personality, assistance, and commitment. I think no matter how Citizens is viewed, whether it's viewed as being independent or a branch, doesn't change the fact that the involvement and commitment and contribution from the town through Memorial or directly, however, I'm not sure how the finance is working, is terrific. I think it's a shot in the arm, I think it makes a difference, and I think as a trustee, and my sense of all the trustees, we very much appreciate that and support that happening on an ongoing basis. I agree with Dot, I think it feels appropriate for the trustees to have input on things in addition to the trust fund. I think our commitment is very much to our community, our neighborhood, in terms of the personality and the charm of the facility, and that's something that, that happens in very small increments, it's like personality changes, that you may not notice when they happen gradually, but suddenly, they're gone, and I think the commitment that we all share is to, to keep the charm and historic perspective of Citizens Library the way it is. I'm really happy that a long time ago, Jennifer Freeman got us on the, the network so that we can exchange books all through towns and through with the other towns. I think that's basically it, I think it's, it's going very successfully, we have begun talking about bylaws, and I think even if this had, this discussion hadn't happened, I would really urge that we be allowed to continue, because I think the place, at the very least for first draft, for that to happen, for the bylaws to be put together, is at the trustee level. That's, the bylaws are what the trustees will do and be responsible for. I appreciate that, I'm sure beyond that happening, they'll go to lawyers and the town, and, you know, like any organization, that's the way things work, but we'd appreciate being able to finish our work, and I think there's time to do that, whether or not it has to go to this town meeting or not, I don't have any background to know whether that's essential, but even if it is, I think we could, we could move things along a little bit quickly, if it's essential to go to a town meeting this year. But again, I appreciate the commitment the town has made for the support and the collaboration between Citizens and Memorial Libraries, and I think Maria and her staff have done a great job with us, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Annette and Dot. I really would try to take a look at this from a holistic view, and what was being proposed here today, and also, the first thing I did is I took a look back on historical minutes, and I had the fun job of being the minute taker, but I also looked back in minutes prior to my time, for what the trustees did, what they voted on, which areas that they actually managed, and while I understand that things evolve and change, I think there are some things here that we may want to consider that the trustees be a part of, that's above and beyond just the gift fund. A few of these things that I saw that there were votes on were state aid, hours, programming, the gift fund naturally, and the gift fund, I know your question Fran was about, what is the gift fund used for? Two recent uses of the gift fund was the $2,000 people counter that Maria mentioned, and also, the $1,000 went for whatever programming was thought of, and funds almost as needed. So, we will continue to look at opportunities for the gift fund to support those programs. In November of 2019, we distributed a community survey, excuse me.
I just had a correction, the, the, what was actually, the people counter was paid for with state aid, not the gift fund.
Oh, okay, the state aid, which was also voted on by the trustees, thank you for that clarification, I appreciate it. Now our, now we're $2,000 richer in our gift fund than I thought, start thinking of ways to spend. Thank you. Okay, in 2019, Jennifer, as you know, was, was the head of the library, and we distributed a community survey, and the results of that survey really were three main parts, more hours, more programming, and being a part of the Minuteman Network. Moving from that voice of really the customer or the community, we, COVID hit, as we all know, so things slowed a little bit down, but during that process, Jennifer did find a way that we could become part of the Minuteman Network, even though at the time, we were not considered a branch according to Danielle, who is at the AML. There wasn't the level of great collaboration that we're seeing now at that time, so we ended up joining that network, and I have the contract as an independent library. I don't know how it's invoiced, if its separate items are together now, but that's just historically what that was. Obviously, since then, we've had, you had the July 11th meeting, during which I think Jennifer kind of transitioned the role, and John gave the update with the presentation that you all were able to view, which was great. The trustees unfortunately did not know that that meeting was happening, so we didn't really have any visibility into that, so I think that, that, or at least we knew the meeting was happening, but we didn't know there is an agenda item for the library on the agenda. I guess you always know when select meetings are happening, and I think that might be kind of where the communication gaps started to fall down, which is really where a lot of these problems, I think, are coming from, because one of the key things that I heard is there have been a lot of great changes and improvements with the library, with the hours, with the coverage of staffing, and so forth. One of the things that does cause me pause and worry is that it seems that anything that the trustees did before is being stripped away, and it's just being relegated just to being the gift fund, and I do think as a Board, we do have more to offer, and what really gave me pause about the memo that is being presented today, is that it talked about drafting bylaws, and last month, we actually dedicated almost our entire meeting to a working meeting, that was very collaborative, during which staff and trustees were allowed to give input and talk, so it wasn't just all the trustees giving information on bylaws or all the staff, it was a collaborative, collaborative effort, and we were really trying to identify the role that the trustees should play in the library moving forward. When I read this memo today, what I read is that direct staff, meaning the library staff only, will draft these bylaws, and then as you move on forward, and I'm sorry because I'm a person who writes all the time, so I do get very stuck on words, but words have meaning, as we all know, based on the legal documents that have been coming through from Council. This work would involve engaging with AML trustees, Citizens trustees. To me, that word doesn't have any authority, to engage or be consulted, it's kind of like when I ask my child what time she wants to go to bed, and she says nine, I really wish she would have said eight thirty, let's get ready for bed at eight thirty. That's engaging, that's not having any authority, or being able to weigh in, or be an active member, or having a seat at the table. So, with this language, I really do not support this memo, and I think that in the spirit of collaboration, I, I really do think these are just communication gaps, and I think that if we shored up some of these words, it's something that we could move on, and I respect all of your opinions and the direction you decide to take, but I would hope that you'll take into consideration the trustees who've dedicated their time. I think I may have lost a couple of years of my life this past month for this, so, that's a joke, but if you could please take in consideration the value that the trustees are bringing to the table, and I don't think it's just to be obstinate or to fight becoming a branch, my goal is for all of us to work together and make this the best small library, leveraging amazing resources at the AML, and the, and the team, Maria and the team, are doing a great job, and I think we can continue to collaborate and work together, being regulated to the gift fund will not allow us to work together.
Thank you.
I think it's very important for me to clarify something about the word bylaws. In my memo, I'm not referring to the bylaws that I think that you're referring to, you're, you're talking about, you know, we should, the bylaws that say we should have this many people that do this thing, so the hours should be this, the program should be that, I'm talking about a town bylaw that gives a committee specific authority to do what they want, which right now you don't have. And so, I'm asking the Board, do you want to create a bylaw that creates specific authority to allow the Citizens Library trustees to run their own library, or do you want to amend the special legislation for the Memorial Library, incorporate them, and identify exactly how the Citizen Library trustees fit into that? This has nothing to do with the things that you'd be discussing in your meetings about what goes in your specific policies and procedures, that's not what this is. This is a bylaw to create authority to do things like create policies, which you currently don't have, from my understanding.
I appreciate that clarification. We, I think that I wasn't thinking about the level that you think I was thinking about, I was thinking about a trustee board that does have some authority to try to protect the space of the library as it, as it has a local library feeling, but I don't think that we're asking for carte blanche, to do what we want, we're really just asking to be able to weigh in, in terms of as these bylaws are created, and the only thing about this, how this content is written, is it doesn't feel like we even have remotely even a say to help drafting the bylaws. I don't think it should be something that's done in an insular environment of the trustees or the staff, I really would be looking for that to be more of a team collaboration instead of an authoritative collaboration.
Okay, thank you. We have any questions for the trustees from the Select Board at this point? If not, we'll open up some questions from the audience. Okay, to the audience.
I'm Ann Chang, I'm a trustee of the Memorial Library. I do not want the incorporation papers for the Memorial Library to be opened up again to allow the West Acton Library to be part of, to be under the Memorial Library, I don't want that. We have corporate members, we have elected members, and you guys are appointed by town meeting, so that would be three different, I mean, that makes it absolutely a nightmare for the, just for the staffing of the different sets of trustees. So, I think that we should have town bylaws which, in cooperation, you write, which will give you a chance to outline, which John just said, the things that you want the trustees to do, and I don't think that this is what you would call a, you know, we don't want to be, the Memorial Library trustees do not want to be running the West Acton Library. Unfortunately, some of our staff has already been committed to that, which I think takes away from the Memorial Library, and I would like to have the town have more staff just for you and not for both of us, but I'm not sure we have the monies for that yet. So, I want you to be calmer, I guess, or rest assured, that we don't want to take you over in that way, we think that if you listen to what John just said about writing bylaws, like a committee writes bylaws, because you will end up being like a committee, and it will give you a chance to set out what you need to do, or what you should be doing, and what you shouldn't be doing, or, and I think you will be doing it not only with amongst yourselves, but also with input from some of the people from Memorial Library, because that's what the Memorial Library trustees do, we look at different policies which may or may not have anything to do with you, okay, you know, for meeting room policies, book buying policies, book banning policies, all that kind of nonsense, we review those and go through them and pass them. I don't know whether you guys are going to be doing that, or you're going to be doing it underneath, I mean, I should think it would be a combination underneath the other things, but yes, keep your trust funds, no, you can't have anything from the Acton Memorial Library Foundation, it's incorporated just for the, good, because you're not going to get it.
Further comments from the audience? Let's, let me just get a comment from the Library Director first, Tara, before we...
Thank you.
You need to go to a microphone.
So, I just wanted to speak a little bit about the challenge of having, while I understand that there are two trustees and that there are some of us here that do, that want the trustees to have some kind of authority, and to be able to develop bylaws, and to set out their own policy, the challenge that we are encountering, that we've been working, trying to work through these last few months, is the duplication of efforts to get anything done or, or passed. So, in a branch system, and anyone who knows me by now, been here seven months, I'm constantly reminding people that I came from a 13-branch library system, where there was one set of policies for all branches, so, the trouble is when we have a policy, say, a programming policy, a meeting use, a meeting room policy, a circulation policy, which is really the most important one right now for AML, it's really difficult to go ahead and try to write one for Citizens, it should be the same thing, and so, that's what we're looking for, is for, for more collaboration in that, it's, it's a duplication of efforts. There's another thing that happens too, that when the, when the Citizens Library decided to become part of the Minuteman Library Network, and Minuteman, I just did get clarification, it happened around November of '21, the Minuteman Library recognizes Citizens as part of AML, not as a separate library, and so, when they joined the network, they agreed to abide by the rules set forth by MLN, and even state laws around patron confidentiality, so for example, at Memorial, one always has to bring their library card, or they have their number, or show it on the app, at Citizens, that was not the case, that was not the practice, and so, even though some trustees here do say that everything's going well, and there are no problems, there is still, we are, even as we say this, we still have kept requests to go back to the way things were, and so, what I'm looking for is consistency, this isn't about a group, this isn't about people, we just want to do our job and continue to serve the people of Acton, so, the greatest difficulty is that duplication of effort, so if we could find a way to streamline all of that policymaking and have one policy, and I know that Ann... and I know that Ann Chang doesn't want us to get together, but we need to find a way to collaborate so that we're not doing this twice and over and over, and we can get to the business at hand, which is offering library and community services to every member of the town of Acton. Thank you.
Thank you. Tara.
Thank you. I have no problem with collaboration, absolutely not. And I have no problem with consistent policies. But I want Tara to know that what he's talking about is a bylaw that would override the association's bylaw. It would make it moot. Right now, under state law, as the State Library Commissioners have told me, that where an association doesn't have a bylaw, where it is not defined by town law, that state law rules. And Section 11 of Chapter 78 says that the trustees have control over the entire library. That's it. I don't think they want to have control over everything. They do want to be involved, and they have been involved. The fundraising there is a significant portion of the overall budget as compared to Acton Memorial Library. So they have been involved. Maybe Nancy will stand up, be a trustee for a long time, and tell you what's the kind of things they did. But I want to read to you the actual Article 54, 55, and 56, they're intertwined. Article 54 of 1960 SUE says, "Part of the property has been used as the west branch of Acton Memorial Library." Then below that, it has two separate articles, one of which to raise money for, to fund the branch, and one to fund the Citizens Association. If in fact it was considered that the whole thing was going to be a branch, why would they have two separate articles? Why would they mention "part of the library has been used"? Big difference. And my last thing is about the Minuteman contract. The rules that, so first of all, it's a multi-party contract where the trustees were recognized as an entity, a separate entity. The town insisted on the trustees signing up as a separate entity. And the rules, which I have no problem with, were the rules about Minuteman, about the treatment of the data regarding the Minuteman. So I don't think these guys have a problem with that either. I just want to be careful about, I, back when there was a transition plan, you know, just training staffing, and, you know, a lot of this stuff everybody loves, what I mentioned is this a hostile takeover? And I was assured, no, this is, this is a collaboration, to get more consistent hours in programming, et cetera. So I want to be really careful that we don't undermine the very effort to leverage the wonderful folks in West Acton that spend all this time doing this work. And I urge you to hold off, let the process take forth. They sit around in the meeting, talking about what do you do, what do you don't do, I'm not going to go in the librarian's desk, and, you know, all this stuff, right? Let that happen for a little while and see how we're going. I mean, if you want a cheap way to do it, then don't create a town meeting battle, that's for sure. Because that's sure as heck going to cause a lot of effort to be spent on something that is not about programming and about the culture of the Citizens Library. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the audience? Matt, do we have anybody on line that we should speak?
There are no raised hands, Mr. Chair.
Further comments from members of the Select Board? David?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's clear to me that having these two libraries as separate entities is not workable. That's the way it was, and it kind of worked, but didn't work well. It's worked much better as they've become closer and closer. It's also not workable, as Maria said, for staff to operate under divided management, right? That's just, you know, if any of you has been in a job position where you've had two managers, it's a nightmare situation, right? As she pointed out, they need one set of policies for the libraries. And I think that people in town expect to be able to do things at both libraries. And that's, was certainly the feedback that I got before they, you know, they started to become closer. You know, people complained to me as a Select Board member that they couldn't do things at the Citizens Library that they could do at the Memorial Library. So, sorry. I just said that the, citizens complained to me about things that they could not do at the Citizens Library that they could do at AML. This was a couple of years ago. And the situation has gotten better over, especially the past year. So I think that we need to operate the Citizens Library as a branch. I think it needs to be clear that way. I think that, you know, the things the Citizens Library trustees would like to do kind of violate that. It is just not a workable situation. It's clear that they are not library trustees under Massachusetts general law. Town Council has said that. So I think that we need to start on a direction to make it clear that the Citizens Library operates as a branch of the Memorial Library.
Thank you. Comments from other members of the Select Board? Jim?
This has been really interesting. The part that I did not understand at all before was the difference in approach, and that, you know, you referred to this, Maria, that, you know, that Ann Chang, as one of the trustees, was speaking about, you know, really not wanting to get into the business of managing the Citizens Library, not wanting to get into the business of thinking about policies for the Citizens Library or the programming for the library. And on the other hand, I totally get your dilemma. I mean, the difficulty, the extra work that it takes of having to have, you know, a policy for one library, and then perhaps a slightly different version of that policy for the other library. So that's a, that's a really interesting dilemma that I don't think any decision that the Board could make tonight would resolve. I think we got some structural conversations that have to continue, you know, involving all, you know, three parties here, the staff and the Memorial Library Trustees and the Citizens Library Trustees. The other thing that I picked up on that was, that I hadn't really put into words before, was that when you were talking about, you know, consultation or engagement as being similar to when you offer a child a bedtime, what I hadn't realized before, but makes perfect sense to me hearing it, is that you, trustees, you feel like you've been treated as children and, you know, sort of kept in the dark, not being given clear authority, being given sort of vague promises of authority, but not really getting it. So I don't know how to fix that, but I am sure that, so you alluded to, there was a problem with the email shell, so that people were not getting alerted to things. So that's certainly an easy fix that has to be done right away, if it's not done already.
I think Maria has.
Yeah, I'm in the middle, Maria. And, you know, I assume that, that's got a long history behind it. So that's why I think there needs to be more of this three-way communication. And if people from the Board can be helpful in that, then that's great. But I don't think we have enough information and clarity of direction to say, oh, let's definitely go this way or that way tonight.
I think the purpose of this discussion being brought forward now is that there's been 70 years of that ambiguity, and being in the dark about what the authority of the trustees is or isn't, or what, it's basically been generational. Every group that comes in kind of has their own way that they did it, and it was very successful. Then there was something that happened at town meeting where it had to be reset, and here we are. And there's still nothing in our bylaws or books or anything that outline what the trustees of the Citizens Libraries do, other than what it said in 1962 town meeting. So what I'm asking for is direction on how we can clarify that. And I gave two options for how that can be done. A new general bylaw that outlines exactly what the Citizens Library Trustees are and is and what they do, or the option of more formally combining it into the Memorial Library documents. And there may be a third option, but I don't, I'm not sure what it is. And so I think the sooner we can start to come down the path of which one of those paths you want me to take, the sooner we can get clarity that the trustees have been looking for for decades.
Thank you. Maria, you looked eager to say something else.
Thanks again for letting me speak. I just wanted to clarify that the issue with the shell is, I formed the shell, I asked IT to form a shell for the West Acton Citizens Library Trustees, so we have one email. The problem was that some of the members of the Board had not been sworn in again for 2022, and that's why they didn't get it. This was not trying to not provide information or to withhold any information. And we've made every effort, in my very lengthy Director's Report, it's only been like a one or two pager for Citizens, but the AML trustees can attest, because it is a bigger library, we're doing way more, that I give a really high level of detail. So actually, everything that I shared today has been shared throughout these months. So thank you for that. I just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Thank you. Fran?
John, I think, I think the two options you pointed out are certainly valid. I would propose, as I did earlier, that there could be a third option, and that is to enable us to proceed the way we have, coming up with bylaws. You would certainly have a crack at it, obviously, in terms of the hierarchy of the way the town runs. But I think having us work with the staff, the folks we work with from Memorial, and come up with the bylaws for the trustees, I think I would recommend that be considered.
See, that's not an option that's before us. The trustees don't, as created in 1962, don't have authority to create bylaws. And so that's what we're looking, and Council is going to help me explain that, I have a feeling.
Counsel?
Can I just jump in here on that? Again, I think there's some confusion on what people are talking about when they're talking about bylaws. We are not talking about an individual Board of Trustees' set of practices or like rules and regulations that may be called bylaws of that Board, plural. We are talking about a town bylaw, singular, that gives, that actually gives that Board of Trustees some legal authority. Right now, you're in a legal, no man's land, right? You don't have any what we call enabling legislation, which sets out your authority to even operate the library itself beyond the Fund, or to create your own bylaws, plural, for how you operate as a Board. So what we're talking about here is not talking about drafting your operational rules. What we are talking about is drafting your enabling legislation that actually creates the Board and its central, big-picture duties, not fine minutia. You cannot, the Board itself, the idea that there's this third option, that the Board can just continue the way it's going and create its own bylaws, is not a legal solution to the structural problems that are facing the town, that are facing your Board, and that are facing this Select Board, by virtue of the fact that there is no enabling legislation. Does that help clarify what we're talking about here and why that option of just having the trustees create their own bylaws is not a workable solution here? A town bylaw is a legal creation that is adopted by town meeting.
So thank you for that. I think I understand it better now. Are you saying that way back when, for example, when Memorial was put together, somebody had the wherewithal to create bylaws for the trustees of that library? But when trustees were put together for Citizens Library, nobody had the statutory wherewithal to do the same thing?
Correct. So let me, it's completely different. Acton Memorial Library was created by a special act. So you can be, Boards and committees can be created in a number of different ways. The General Court at the state level can create entities and agencies. Way back when, they created the Acton Memorial Library by something called a special act. That is, the second option John put forward is talking about amending that special act, which is a state law, so it would be voted on by the General Court, and it would amend the structure of the Acton Memorial Library to encompass a specific role for the West Acton Citizens Library. Now, Boards and committees, as you see all the time in Acton, can also be created by town meeting. And so town, no one has ever created and enacted the West Acton Citizens Library Board of Trustees and gave them any authority, except authority over the trust fund. So what we're saying is that 1962 town meeting vote just did not do enough to establish the Board of Trustees with all the legal authority you all want to have, or all the legal authority you all have been believing you're acting under. So we would like to correct that omission.
Thank you. Fran?
I think my question's for John, but I'm not positive. Is Citizens following AML's policy now, or not?
I'm not sure. You mean, the internal, how it operates, the policies of the Citizens Library, is it following the identical procedures of the Memorial Library?
They're not. They don't have their own policies.
So no, they're, there's an absence of policies, which is what the trustees have been working on, is creating those.
They don't, in particular, have bylaws under the bar, you know, reporting to them and being able to hire the manager or director. They're pretty much very much the same as AML's bylaws.
Okay.
Thank you. Please identify yourself.
There, okay. Nancy Lenachek. The Citizens Library was incorporated into a library before Acton Memorial Library was. And I'm confused, does that mean that they just never bothered with bylaws?
Well, I think that the distinction here is that the West Acton Citizens Library was established as a private, basically a private club, if you would, back in 1880 or thereabouts.
Yeah.
And they operated as a private entity. I think it was available by subscription.
People had to pay in order to use it.
And then they basically turned their building over to the town in 1962, and then, which was long after the Memorial Library was founded.
Oh, right.
So then they became a branch.
Okay. I wasn't aware that they had ever actually become a branch. I never saw that bylaw. I'd kind of be interested, too. But they were, yes, originally, you had to pay, I believe, a nickel. And then you could come and get any of the books that you wanted. And that's how it worked. And then I think the nickel stopped before 1962, quite a while, but...
Explain your history, trustee. Explain to them what you worked.
Oh, yes, I was a trustee for a zillion years. And did a lot of reading. And I never found the bylaws... And I never found the bylaws from that town meeting. Do you have them, Jim?
The bylaws that would have.
The 1962.
No, there were no bylaws generated there. There was simply.
I'm sorry. It's the, you know.
I'm sorry, I'm still not sure where the question is.
The 1962 town meeting.
Right.
When West Acton Citizens Library was declared a branch of Memorial Library?
It was, the language recognized that the, that part of the Citizens Library was acting as a branch.
I would refer you to the, the collection of Acton Town reports.
Okay.
Which is a really nice bound set over at the Memorial Library.
Okay.
Which I've referred to in the past. Check the excerpts from the 1962 annual town meeting.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Also, in fact, and said, we've reviewed all the town meeting warrant articles in our research. Very clearly was the intent of the 1962 town meeting to adopt West Acton Citizens Library as a branch of Acton Memorial Library.
Okay. There it is. I see it.
Part of the property, yeah.
Thank you.
Again, just to read the, the part of that act, Article 52 of 1962 Town Meeting, the only mention of the fund was in the Section 3, that in the event that at a town meeting you decide to dissolve the library for a fifth vote, then the fund, there was a mention of the fund. But before then, this paragraph 2, shall elect at the town meeting a Board of Trustees, that's completely separate, doesn't have any language of branch. And so it's my understanding, again, from the mass, the state library commissioners, that in the absence of specific bylaws or special act, or corp, what they call association corporate documents, that state law prevails. So.
That's something we've already looked at. That is only true if it meets the criteria of being an association library. Again, the town has asked for our legal opinion of that, and we provided that. I'm sure they appreciate your legal opinion here as well.
Well, it's not a legal opinion. I'm saying that it is right here, the Library Association of West Acton, the Citizens Library Association of West Acton. So I feel like it's time to get another legal opinion, and it's my understanding that boards and committees are elected.
I will stop you right there.
Thank you.
And I, I will tell you that we have town council here, and if you, as a private individual, wish to retain your own lawyer to, to investigate this, why, certainly as a citizen, that's something you're welcome to do. So, I'm looking for any further guidance from the rest of the board, and as I'm sure the town manager is looking for guidance. David?
So I'm just trying to set up something that is workable here, right? And it is clear that having Citizens Library trustees have, you know, major input into the hiring of staff at the library, running the library, is not a tenable situation when that staff is being provided from the Memorial Library. If they had enough business to sustain their own staff, then that might be true, but it's a, it's a little library, right? And they cannot provide good service to our citizens with just a completely separate, standalone staff. Not to mention is, I don't believe that's the expectation of citizens in town. You know, citizens, sorry. Citizens want full, full service at the little library, and, and that's, that's important to them. And if we, and we cannot set, in my opinion, we can't set something up with, and put staff in the position of reporting to two bodies that have authority. That's just not workable. And I know that you were talking about them treating as children. I'm not trying to be, you know, use words like that to criticize anybody, but one entity has to have the authority to run the library, and one entity may be consulted about things, right? And, and so I think that's just the way it has to be. And if we, we need to, we need to set something up and ask town meeting to set something up that is workable over the long term. And we, we've been in this situation several times, just since I've been on the board, of having this ambiguity of how this library, library operates. So I would like to see us clarify that this is a branch of the Memorial Library, and assign some duties to the Citizens Library trustees, but mainly that's the gift fund, right? The running of the library, the details of the programming, the hiring of the staff cannot be on the table for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
So I think that after a while, the best solution is going to be the direction of amending the special acts, and having a board that consists of people that are currently on the Acton Memorial Library Board and currently on the Citizens Library Board to manage the system, which includes the main, you know, the two branches of the library. However, if we tried to go to, let's talk this through. Let's say we go to town meeting with a proposal to amend the special acts, and the Acton Memorial Library trustees recommend against it. It's not going to pass, so we would be stuck again. So I still think there's work, there's, there's still communication work that needs to be done between staff and the Memorial Library Board, and presumably the Citizens Library Board too as well, to find a common way forward, or else it's not going to work at town meeting. So, you know, if it's helpful, I mean, I'd be happy to vote in favor of the notion that we should be headed in that direction, but I don't think it's appropriate for us to try to shoehorn this into the current town meeting, because I think there's a bigger, a bigger set of communication issues. No, it could be that Ann is not speaking for the entire trustees. I mean, this may be a simpler problem than I thought, but I think it's worth, I think that has to be explored before we could take this to the town meeting.
Please.
Hi, Miriam Lezak. I am also on the Board of Trustees, and I would just like to clarify that Ann was not speaking for the entire board. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, looking at my fellow board members, does anybody think that we're going to be ready to go to town? Manager?
Sorry about that. So I do, so I also do think that, personally, I think the best way forward is to integrate for collaboration and getting more feedback into it. And so I would be, I honestly would be comfortable in voting. I think that us voting provides direction, and us voting today does not define what the roles of these trustees would look like. Our vote today would be to essentially decide which one of two legal pathways do we take to achieve, hopefully, this end goal of providing a strong Board of Trustees, however that looks, for our town. And so I, I think that, you know, our place is to really just provide that direction as opposed to saying, these are your roles and responsibilities as trustees, and if we, you know, and this is how it's different for citizens versus Memorial of anything. So I do see us moving forward in potentially exploring amending the special act. But I also, and I think that maybe we could say like, something around, the board recommends this, and would essentially direct staff to draft it. But I do think that maybe even adding in contingent on votes of approval from the Citizens Trustees and AML, or something along those lines, to make sure that our trustees feel like they have a say, an actual decision-making power in the drafting of what this special act amendment would look like, or what these, or what potentially this bylaw would look like. Although it seems like for the bylaw, it's more straightforward. It just provides the enacting ability for trustees to then create their own policies, so.
Thank you. Well, I think, no matter which of the two paths we take, I think it's going to be real hard lift to get this ready for town meeting, which is only four months away. So I, I was going to ask you to phrase a motion, but I see David, his hand raised, so.
So I, I completely agree with everything everybody has said, that involves further discussion and that kind of thing. I was going to make the motion that, but instead of saying 2023 town meeting, say future town meeting, if it happened to be magical that, you know, everybody, everything is agreed in four weeks, fine, but if it can't be, it can't be, right? So I, I would move to direct staff to prepare an amendment to AML's special legislation for a future town meeting to clarify Citizens Library, that Citizen Library operates as a branch library and outline specific duties of this as Citizens Library trustees.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Can I just offer a friendly amendment, contingent on votes of approval from the Citizens Trustees and our Memorial Library trustees?
Before I accept that, if a group doesn't agree, where are we, right? I think it has to be a consensus thing, so I don't agree with that, that it's a vote. I mean, but I, I think there has to be this, you know, discussion and consensus. You know, I'd be happy to say after discussion and consensus, or something.
And for, just so that I'm clear, would consensus mean like, in general, the majority seems in favor for?
Yes, I mean, we do that in, in everything from.
Great.
May I restate my motion, Mr.?
Please do.
I moved to direct staff to prepare a draft amendment to AML's special legislation for a future town meeting to clarify Citizens Library, that Citizens Library operates as a branch library, and outline specific duties for Citizens Library trustees, and that all efforts be made to have this be a consensus decision.
Is that a second?
I, yes, I'll second that. Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and second, further discussion from the board.
Yeah, so I know that, I know that having a formal vote could potentially extend the process, but I do think that providing tangible decision-making so that if, you know, if, you know, one group of the trustees, whether it's AML or Citizens, isn't comfortable with it, that there is that back and forth between staff. And I think that as liaison, potentially, that's something that I could help with this, is trying to make sure that our trustees do feel like they are part of the process. So it could be, and that's why I think that I'm okay with, with the motion, is because I think that that's something I can work with, with the boards, to make sure that our trustees do feel like they're being heard in the process, but also that we're really giving value to the work that staff is doing to try to put together something that helps our libraries run more efficiently.
Thank you. Further comment from the board?
Just one comment, quick. And I like how you phrase that, to make the libraries run more efficiently for the town.
Thank you. We're ready for a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, I think we have a path forward, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone involved in this, various trustees, the library staff, and interested members of the public. Item five, discussion of potential articles for annual town meeting.
I defer to Assistant Town Manager Mark Hall for this one, please.
Good evening. Excuse me. In your online packet and on your desk are latest versions of the article spreadsheet and the timeline to the election and the town meeting.
Further discussions, if you could make them in the stairway, would be great. Thank you.
So the board voted on December 19th to close the warrant on, hmm?
December 19th?
I think it was December 19th the board voted.
Oh, December 19th, yeah, yeah.
To, to close the warrant on February 15th, that's coming. So we still have about five weeks remaining to receive citizens petitions, of which we have received none so far. In the spreadsheet, you'll see the usual articles that we have every year, but also highlighted in yellow are the articles that are unique to this year, for a total of 35, maybe it's 34 now. I can step through all of them, or just take questions on the ones that you have an interest in, and describe them as best I can.
I think the, I think probably the, the most interesting ones are the amending the zoning bylaws. If you could kind of walk us through those a bit.
Sure. A few of them are probably eligible for consent, they're just going to be what we would consider housekeeping articles, renumbering accessory apartments, that is, I believe there's a, a lettering issue in the sequencing that needs to be corrected. In, in the signed bylaw, there's an omission of the LED light color temperature that they want to add, that would match another section of the zoning bylaw, and a correction to the term, from distribution plant to distribution center, to also match another section in the zoning bylaw. Two of the zoning bylaw proposals that are, that would probably not be eligible for, for consent would be the firearms placement or locations that's been discussed here before. And the other one is a modification to the zoning map, which is the groundwater protection districts. That would be to account for wells in other towns where the Zone 2 extends into Acton, and it's not currently shown on Acton's zoning map. It's shown on the state map, but not, not our local map. I believe that's the five zoning-related.
Ann, could you walk me through the Chapter K personnel?
Chapter K, I believe, is an older bylaw, and it seems like some sections of it may have been superseded by the town charter. And where there's a town manager authority to do hiring, there may be some antiquated language in that bylaw that we want to look at and, and perhaps modernize or eliminate.
Okay. Going back to number 13, men zoning bylaw firearms dealer, do we have a, a draft bylaw yet, or what's, where does that stand in the process?
I have not seen any draft of that bylaw. I talked with Kristen Gichard, and she said she's waiting on whether the board wanted to move forward with such a proposal for this town meeting.
Okay, thank you. Questions from other members of the board? David?
Thank you. What is item eight, the disposition of remaining balance Douglas Gates School Building Project?
That one just came in today. It came in from the AB School District to both Acton and Boxborough, and that is to the disposition of, of the remaining fund balance of the Gates-Douglas School Building Project.
Which is an excess balance?
Apparently so. I don't know the amount. The, the request was just for a placeholder with details.
So I'm on the school building committee, yeah, so they, there are things they may want to include in the project, so maybe that's what that's, that's. so maybe that's what that's for, okay. For the firearms dealers, didn't we vote to ask the staff to make a draft? So if Kristen is confused, then I'm confused.
The direction that we got that night was to come back in January, which I guess it's January, with more information about that. So I think this is a placeholder, just so we don't lose track of it. And we'll probably have something for you at the next meeting, or in the meantime.
Okay. And the groundwater protection districts, that's specifically for the new wells that are?
It's actually related to wells that are in other towns.
Oh, that's, okay, but not our wells also?
Right.
There's no changes for?
Not to my knowledge. I mean, there might be with.
I was kind of under the impression that there was, but maybe not. Okay, so that's, that's fine.
This specific placeholder is for that other matter.
Okay. Thank you. And just, I would be willing, you know, eager to get the draft language for these articles piecemeal, if they're available piecemeal, rather than waiting for the entire warrant, just to, you know, be able to give feedback on them. Thank you.
Jim?
Yeah, I had a comment about possibly missing change. It would be along with the specialized opt-in stretch code, which is number 15 here. Those regulations are final, so we are certainly able to vote on those. Along with it is a related bit about the 10-town fossil fuel pilot that was enabled in, you know, the last big state climate legislation. We've seen draft regulations for that that describe an approach that has a bylaw for towns, a model bylaw to consider, which basically says, yeah, sure, we're going to adopt the opt-in specialized stretch code, but we're going to cross out the parts that say you can use fossil fuels. So basically, the opt-in stretch code provides a way of building with all-electric and with fossil fuels, and has different requirements for each. And essentially, it's a little more complicated than that because they disallow certain things. They disallow the regulation of certain things. It looks like it would be a bylaw that would be passable, you know, as soon as the specialized opt-in stretch code is passed. So I would recommend we have at least a placeholder there. It's, you know, we'll have to work. I know that Town Council has been working with the other towns that are in a very similar situation, that are part of this 10-town pilot. So we may get some new information from them about how to handle the fact that our town meeting might be, you know, happening before the final regulations. There may be a way forward.
May I make just a small comment specifically related to? Do we have to? I saw in the bottom of the 10-town thing that towns have to accept that? The 10 towns have to specifically accept? Do the laws that we passed previously act as our acceptance? Or must there be another article to accept?
That's part of the clarity that we're seeking. You know, they issued some guidance on it, and, you know, as was mentioned, our Town Council's meeting to learn more exactly about those type of questions. But we can flag that one, if it hasn't already been flagged.
If it is the way I think it is, I think it has to be another article that we specifically have to, they name us as one of the possible 10 towns, but then somewhere like towards the bottom, it says, if towns want to do this, they have to accept this. And I didn't know whether what we passed already, when we passed the bylaw on the home rule, counted as that acceptance, or whether we had to do something else.
Right. There does appear to be an actual application form in addition. We wrote a letter right away, that John wrote, that said, you know, yeah, we want to be in the pilot, but there does seem to need to be an additional act. So we'll get the details from Town Council.
Personally, I think that it would make things a lot cleaner if we did bring such a thing back to town meeting again, to make it very clear. I think, you know, people have had a chance to think about this for a year or so, and there might be some arguments pro and con that could be made, and I think the town meeting is the best place to make it. So I think we probably do need a placeholder in case those regulations have been completed in time. I think, I think a question for the manager is, at what point do we want to sit down and start talking about assignments for these?
Well, I think the ones that aren't highlighted in yellow are safe to assign now, and then we could expect that there will be another, you know, 15 or 20, or maybe even more assignments as more things develop, getting closer. Or we could just plan to do that in early February, and look at the whole thing then.
Yeah, let's go for February, I think. Thank you. Other comments from other members of the board? David?
Is this short enough to do on one night?
It's only listed as one night right now, just because there was no need to divide it up right away. It's probably not a single night town meeting, just looking at this list.
You don't think it's single night?
I wouldn't.
Because other than consent, what there are 13? So I just was thinking, we do 13 articles a night? Oh, no, so last year, didn't we have close to 50 articles? Of course, we don't know what citizens petitions are going to happen, but last year, we had close to 50 articles, and so.
It was the most articles we had seen in probably 10, 12 years, yeah.
I think just the firearms dealers and the minimum voting age probably could each take an entire night in themselves.
Okay, agreed.
All right. Need further guidance?
Yeah, and this, I guess this should just be the point where, you know, we let you know where we're at in terms of the placeholders, and if there's anything that you think needs to be added, you've already given us a couple, but if there's anything else that you think is missing, if you let us know, we can start adding it to the list of things we're working on.
Comments from board members? Jim?
I guess this is along your lines, Dean, about wondering about assigning these. The ones that are, you've mentioned two, that I think are going to be both, you know, tricky, complex, and controversial. And to pass them is going to require, you know, a communication strategy, getting the word out about these things, having educational forums. It's probably not going to be enough to simply film, you know, a six-minute video of one of the select board members standing up and, you know, showing a couple pictures. So the sooner we do assign these, the sooner we can, you know, get to work on, you know, hearing from people about them and communicating back, and getting the dialogue going so that it's, you know, it's ready for town meeting.
Well, I think, Hima, you were the select board member who specifically recommended as a goal the minimum voting age. Do you?
But yeah, I'm more than happy to take that on. But yeah, it's definitely up to the board, and David specifically, because I know we both had talked about putting this on.
And David, I think you were the select board member that communicated that you were most interested in the firearms dealer regulations. So do you want to take lead on that, so you can start getting your arguments together?
Sure, that's fine. And, you know, for the others, were you going to do them all right now? I was just, I would, I don't think we need to wait to February, from my point of view, but I would be happy, from my point of view, to have a little bit of time to think about them before next meeting. So maybe we can just do, you know, make the decisions in January, but next meeting, if it's not too crowded in the schedule.
Okay, why don't we plan on the, plan on the 23rd, I believe is our next meeting, and we can, we'll assign them then.
And depending on what you want to do, Mr. Chair, last year, I was prepared to speak to any of the consent items that got held. I mean, I could do that again if you want, or you could do that, whatever you think is appropriate. It did involve some study and whoever is, who's ever going to do that, because you have, you know, be able to, you know, have a couple slides usually on those in case they get held.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other thoughts on this? All right. So, item six, Asa Parlin.
Thank you. Yes, I'm pleased to report that the president, when he signed the large appropriation bill, or whatever you call it, at the federal level, and the House approved, and the Senate approved, it included a local funding that was advocated for and put in, put in before the Congress by Congresswoman Lori Trahan. It is, and we're very pleased that, as a result, we have $750,000 that's been allocated in the federal budget to restore the historic Asa Parlin House, to provide event space, to facilitate meetings, library programming, cultural events, and maintain the historic integrity and visual impact from Woodbury Lane, and to restore the appearance of the municipal complex that also hosts the library in the town hall. So with this excellent news, we have found yet another external funding source to help with a very important local, high-priority need. And so I just wanted to touch base with the board on that. We have funding from, that you've allocated from our ARPA allocations, and there's a little bit of money left over from a CPA funding that was approved by town meeting. And so we have a project funding, which we can put together a project, and we want to move forward on it. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, the last time we brought it before the board, the concept that we discussed was to take the existing building, rehab it, get rid of the taller structure that you can see that faces town hall, bringing it down to its smaller core original structure, and then add a small addition on the back to facilitate bathrooms and just kind of utility space. And then kind of use that as an indoor-outdoor meeting and gallery space, a studio for use by community groups, or public, or select board meetings, or whatever we want to do there. And so we would like to move forward. There's been interest from members of the community that want to participate in sort of taking this thing forward. And so I'd like to start working with them, and the designer who's still on board, to start working on that, to try to move this project forward. With the funding secured, we can maybe have a plan together this spring. It's optimistic to say we'd start construction in the fall, but I want to, I think we have the funding secured, and I want to move forward. And I just want to make sure that if there's any concerns from the board, that we, that I hear them now, so that we can incorporate that into next steps.
Well, I think the two pieces of input that I would provide for you was that the funding that we have right now in hand is the most funding we have. I don't want to see, you know, somebody come up with a more aggressive plan that's going to require additional funding, because obviously, it's too late to get it from town meeting. It's way too late to apply for CPC funds. Let's just get it done. It's been hanging around long enough. I think we just, I think we're talking in the neighborhood of a million dollars. And I, from various sources, and I would expect that we should be able to get some credible result for a million dollars back there, for a very small structure. I think, you know, in some of the designs that have been kicked around for years, the concept of reducing it to its smallest, most historic core, I think is still viable, is still important. The other addition I would suggest is that, when you look at design, there's a very large chrysanthemum tree out there beside it, evergreen. And I think whatever work can be done to make sure that we try to preserve that tree, I think that's a real nice aspect to the campus. So I'd like to see that preserved, if at all possible. That's the only input I've got. I'll look to the other board members. Jim?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with certainly going ahead and using the, you know, the federal allocation for the Asa Parlin House. I think that makes a lot of sense. I guess I'd wonder if, John, if knowing that you have this $750,000, would you want to have the board consider reallocating any of the $300,000 of the ARPA money to other needs that now seem more pressing?
I would not recommend that. I think that part of the application or the process that we engaged with, with Congresswoman Trahan's office, was the fact that we did have local funding to match what she would put in as the earmark. So I don't know if, how that, I don't think that would impact it, but I don't think that was how we envisioned this going. I thought we envisioned it going as, we need more than we have. Town meeting said no to what we were thinking last year. We need to find another source. We found it, we want to move forward and get this thing done.
Great, comfortable.
Fran? I'm so excited for this to move forward. And also, can you work this into your larger project of the parking lot as well? Like, sort of an adjacent project when this is going on?
Yeah, so part of what we'll need to do is sort out what happens with that little driveway that's next to the building, the existing family's driveway, which goes up to that nice tree that you like. So there'll be some consideration for the site and how it's going to, its final recommended layout, and that will be incorporated into the design work that we're seeking funding for at town meeting to redesign the whole complex for parking and pedestrian and bicycle improvements. So yeah, so it'll be, it'll be combined, but this is probably going to happen first, because we don't have the funding for the parking lot at this time.
David?
Thank you. Will there be, is your plan to come forward with, you know, to try to work up with the design, that's the best use of the funding we have, and then come back once more to the board for us to give it a thumbs up?
Yes, there are several people that have, you know, an interest in what happens back there, and I think I'd want to engage with all of them, including a member of the board. I think there was one assigned. In any event, we, yes, we would come back and say, here's the final plan, we're about to go and get it done. Any last comments or concerns? And then, yeah, so we would do that, and I don't know the schedule at this point. There's a lot of, we have a lot of things going on transition-wise. But I did, we did talk to the architect and said, listen, if we get this federal funding, are you on board to help us again come January, February? And they said yes. So we can definitely get started again.
Okay, thank you. Moving along. Item seven, discuss the latest concept plans for the new Main Street campus parks. Now, to put this in context, the Select Board Goals, August 2nd, 2021. Goal number 10, work with the Acton Dog Park Committee and the Acton Housing Authority on design and construction of a dog park and a cohesive design for the whole site. Now, over the years, ensuing period of time, a concept has come forward about the piece in between the dog park and the Dennis Manor project, being an elder-oriented park area. And Dennis Dale has been hired to do the design, and so this is sort of an update, let everybody know where we stand. There might be one or two decisions that we might ask the board to weigh in on at this point, to move this project ahead. So I'll defer now to the manager.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the board and in this venue, the public, knows about these projects, because I received a request from a resident who said, I heard there's something going on there, and they didn't know about it. So I just thought, okay, it's time to just make sure that everybody's aware of it, because I think it's pretty exciting that the entrance to sort of the- I think it's pretty exciting that the entrance to sort of heading up the hill is going to look entirely different with some exciting things to really meet some core needs in the community, housing, open space, and other amenities. So I don't have any specific concerns that we needed to iron out tonight. I just wanted to make, take the opportunity to, to make sure everybody knows that these work, this work is underway. And then I hope there's any, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, I see. We have Steve Trumbull, who's the chair of the Recreation Commission here, and, you know, there had been requests that Rec sort of take point on many of these issues. Also note, we've got a member of the Dog Park Committee here as well, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to just give you a quick update. So we had one formal meeting prior to the holidays. We, we have always taken the position of supporting the two bookends of the McManus Manor and the Dog Park and not to get in their way. We have our next meeting a week from Thursday on the 19th, and there'll be some work that has to be cleaned up, I'm sure, after that. And then we would like to come back to the select board to, to give an update of where that is and what we think might work going forward. We have a couple of challenging spots. One is that there's not a lot of soil in the front part of that area from the, that was removed over the years. And of course, now that the, the sewer and the McManus Center have gone through, we've been working with the Dog Park. I think Tom and I go to a lot of meetings, but we're, we're really work, looking forward to, to bringing that back. But we, we're really in the middle and we're addressing certain things and making sure that, you know, we're cognizant of, of various activities around there like sidewalks and the use of, or non-use of Isaac Davis Way and all of that. So more to come in about a month, I guess. Thank you.
Okay. Any other, anybody from the Dog Park care to weigh in? I think I've, I've been liaison of the Dog Park Committee and they've, they seem to be coming up with almost a final design, so. Tom?
Good evening. Tom Gillespie with the chair of the Dog Park Committee. We now have a design from Dennis Dale, who is the designer, and it's nice that he's able to sort of immediately connect work on the Dog Park with future work on the Senior Park as well. We have a design that has been modified to take the sewer extension into account, and so that is how we expect to move forward. We thank the effort to pull that ahead because that really decouples a lot of the stuff wonderfully going on with the housing project with the Dog Park design. The Dog Park design that Dennis has come up with is about 16,000 square feet, accomplishes a all-dog area and a small dog area like we had talked about, and it's a very attractive design. The parking lot continues to come off of that small egress that's fairly close to Route 2. There's no involvement with Isaac Davis Way in that. And we have accomplished a public forum where we went over this design and then also a survey that was sent out where we got a number of responses back asking some specific questions about usage, even ground cover, some amenities, et cetera. So with all that sort of final data gathering in process, we're ready in the new year to work with Dennis, get a final design done. We will take that to Stanton and then use that for applying for the construction grant from Stanton and be pressing ahead this year. So it's very exciting. Questions?
Jim.
You mentioned, and it's, you know, you've been clear on, in the maps, how, how the entrance is sort of opposite the, you know, the, the entrance ramp there.
Yep.
Does that mean that you need to coordinate, does the state need to sign off on this design as well?
Perhaps Mr. Chair would speak to that, but we have checked into some of that rather than just assume.
Well, there's, there's an existing curb cut in that location which access an existing residence. So I, I know there has been, you know, there's possibilities at some point down the road that there'll be modifications to the interchange of Route 2 and Route 27, but I think we're in pretty good shape at this point with that. It does give good visibility in both directions. So I think that's important.
Yeah, and again, the scope is about 10 to 12 parking spaces, so it's a, it's not a huge source or drain. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, again, for your support and your efforts.
Thank you for all the work you've put into it. It's been, what, five years?
I'm not counting.
Yeah. Okay.
Can I just ask, Mr. Chair, do you have an idea when we would try to get a consolidated plan with some pictures and things like that? I mean, it's just very, this is all very exciting.
I, I think the, I think that plan will probably come forward, probably after that meeting that's going to happen in a couple, four weeks.
Yeah, I, I hope we, Dave, after the next meeting, the agreement of approval, we have membership from the McManus team as well as the Dog Park. So we have everybody, we have all stakeholders as well. Hopefully, coming out of the next meeting, we'll handle a couple of issues and bring in some of the design, but we'll give you an idea of where to go, and then we have to, you know, back up.
Thank you. Yeah, that's.
Is my order leaving? He's got the mic for the, the bottom line. No. Not mine. Oh, we got mine.
So the, the bottom line is, you know, we've, we've engaged all stakeholders. I've seen three different plans for different pieces. It's just a matter of combining them and doing some fine tuning. I think I would expect it probably back before the board, middle of February. It's very exciting. Thank you. Next, town manager review process. Now, seems like we did this just the other day. And we're not going to start right now, but I've been working on a revised review document, which is considerably simpler than what was used last time. I think last time there was 15 categories, and then there was opportunities for extensive commentary afterwards. And I, I think a lot of board members, myself included, felt a little overwhelmed by it. That document actually was something that was probably more appropriate for a town department head to review, one of their employees, somebody that they, that they deal with and interact with every single day. And it just was, was pretty overwhelming. So there's a new document that's being developed right now. I'm working with the town manager and the HR director on that. There'll be about 10 categories. There'll still be ample opportunity at the end of the document to provide a narrative and any particular examples and input, but the rest of the document will be much more simple and straightforward. Importantly, we're going to be really stressing on trying to come up with, looking forward, what sort of goals we have for the town manager in the next year. In the past, what's happened is we've never really come up with specific goals for the manager, so the manager has sort of taken over the select board goals and done really an admirable job every year that I've been here in achieving most of them. But, you know, there's a few of them that are not really appropriate to, to gauge the manager on. For instance, we had the discussion a few minutes ago about lowering the voting age, and that's really a political decision. So, you know, whether that passes or fails at town meeting, there's certainly be no reflection on the manager and should not be viewed as such. So I think it's important that we do start looking very seriously at, at calls for the manager in, in future years. But I think, you know, looking at the nice updates the manager has given us on progress he's made on the goals is, you know, a great sign. So the important thing is, we'll probably at our meeting on February 27th, we'll be handing out the document. We'll go out electronically. You're going to give everybody about two weeks to fill out their individual reviews and send them back to me. I'll be the lead reviewer on it. I will work with the HR director on that as well. We'll compile that. So we'll give you about, until about March 13th or thereabouts, and then we'll be, hopefully have the document done and back before everybody so that we can start talking about this in the end of March or very early April. The important thing for me is to get this done while we have the present board in place and that it not be close to the election and, most importantly, not be involved in all the craziness that occurs right at the last couple of weeks before town meeting. So we've got a little bit of time, but I think that's pretty much my message. It'll be a different document. It's still under, under review right now. We're still working on it. But I do need a fast turnaround. You know, if we don't get, if I don't get responses back from all five members of the board, we'll have to move ahead with whatever responses we do get. Any questions? Jim?
First of all, just thanks for, thanks for diving into this really important question of, of how town managers evaluated. And I think all the moves you're making are consistent with where we need to go. One of the breakthroughs about last year's was that we remembered that we were allowed to ask for a self-review first, and having John draft up a response to the, you know, 15 or 10 categories was really helpful for us to, you know, remember what you had done, to, to get a view of your perspective into how you're working with the rest of the organization, which we only see in, you know, little, little pieces. So I'm hoping that's part of the process, too.
It most certainly is. The, because we forget these things. You know, we look through your calendars on your phone so many times to remember what y'all, what you did in the last year. Any other question? Himaja?
Yeah, thank you. This all sounds good to me. One good question with regards to the town manager goals, would, are we envisioning this to be like broad goals that we would essentially recycle and reuse for years to come? Or are we looking at specific, like, kind of like the select board goals in the moment? What are the short and long-term goals in the moment that we are hoping to work towards?
Well, I think a lot of the goals we'd be looking for for the manager, you know, would be very specific to him and his team. And, you know, the, for instance, there's a, we have a challenge right now with a turnover in, in personnel on the finance wing. That'll be resolved before we get into this process, but if we seize that kind of a challenge coming up again and we realize, oh, boy, we've got, you know, an eight-person department and five of them are all resigning, retiring, then I think a goal would be something along the lines for the manager is to, you know, find a way through that lack of help. Are you going to reorganize? Are you going to provide replacements? That sort of thing. So I think they'd be, they'd be more personalized.
Great, thanks.
John, if you have any thoughts as to how we'd like to parcellate your work for you?
Yeah, I, thanks for the opportunity. I do think that, you know, there's things that I'm required to do by charter, which probably shouldn't be goals unless I'm not doing them, and you could say, you really need to make sure you do this next year, for example. But I do think that, you know, the conversation that we had earlier would be a hard one for me to be assigned, but I, that's the kind of thing you could say, I need you to figure out the situation with next year or whenever, and that could be a goal. I wouldn't want six or eight of goals like that, but that's the kind of things that, you know, you have them as select board goals, which I, you know, I take as, as partially mine, or I take ownership in those, and that's fine. They could be the same. You could have, it could be a select board goal and a town manager goal. Doesn't have to be all new things. I'd actually prefer if it was duplicate. So, yeah, that's, and I'm happy to, when I did the self-evaluation last year, I believe I provided four or five examples of things that I thought would be good goals to be ready to work on. So that, yeah, and I would, and I would probably do the same this year.
Thank you. Consent items. Item nine, accept gift from the Acton Lions Club 15 Christmas tree certificates for distribution at the discretion of the Community Services Coordinator. Item 10, approve multiple one-day alcoholic beverage licenses for Theater 3 located at 250 Central Street. Item 11, appoint Joan Burrows as associate member of the Commission on Disabilities until June 30th, 2025. Item 12, appoint Melissa Wingfield as a full member of the Commission on Disabilities until June 30th, 2024. Item 13, appoint Alyssa Nickel as the Historical Commission representative to the 250 Committee until September 30th, 2026. Item 14, appoint Stephen Crosby as an associate member, the Acton Minuteman representative to the 250 Committee until September 30th, 2026. Item 15, approve the executive session minutes from 2010 to 2015 for release. Item 16, accept gift from William Janowski of a Honda EM 2500 generator for use by the Acton Fire Department and Emergency Management. Entertain a motion to accept consent items nine through 16 inclusive?
So moved.
Second? Moved and seconded. All in favor of accepting these items, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? Thank you.
I move to adjourn.
We get a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded and returned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed abstentions? Thank you.